Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Sorry, it's 7:02. I missed it by two minutes. So, our first order is obviously call the meeting to order, and again, welcome, everyone. And then we'll please stand for the invocation. We have anybody here from the Alliance or the... Oh, come on up, and then we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Romeo Lial, Lead Pastor of Passion Church here in Casa Grande. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Congressmen, or Councilmen and Women, for the opportunity to be here. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus to thank you and to glorify you for this evening that you have given us. Lord, I ask that your blessings be upon this place. As each man and woman, Lord God, I pray that they seek your will. Lord, above everything else, bless and fill them, Lord God, with your knowledge and understanding. Give them your wisdom, Lord God, for your word says, those who ask for wisdom, you will give it to them freely. And so, we thank you, and I declare this evening blessed unto you in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
It's a privilege to do that.
All right, the roll call tonight, we actually have one missing soldier, Mr. Lavender. Not Mr. Lavender, you're here, sorry. Geez. Bob Huddleston. Well, you're on the same opposite side.
Good excuse.
Hey, I had five brothers, and I could never name them all right anyway, so that's my excuse. I had to run through all five till I got to the right one. But I know he's not feeling well, so there...
Bob didn't, no?
Yeah, so can we get an excuse?
I've moved to excuse Councilman Huddleston from tonight's meeting.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, he is excused. All right, next is the minutes.
Mayor, the minutes, we move approval of the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes from January 3, 2022. Consider the acceptance of the Arts and Humanities Commission Meeting Minutes from December 7, 2021. Consider the acceptance of the Casa Grande Youth Commission Minutes from December 4, 2021, and consider the acceptance of the Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes from November 4, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Next is D, Claims Against the City.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated December 29, 2021 through January 11, 2022, as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the claims are approved. Next is the Meeting Agenda Approval. Mr. Rains, are there any changes from staff?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone on council have any changes?
No.
Okay, seeing no changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
So, move.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Does this retirement happen tonight?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
We do have a special presentation tonight. I didn't even look to see if I saw Chris out there, but I guess he is out there.
I see him.
Chris, you want to come up front and meet me down by the podium, please?
He's a good guy, all smiles. They'll give it a shot.
Well, first of all, Chris Western been with the Police Department for 25 years, and personally, sad to see him leave. Just a little bit about Chris tonight, he's retiring after more than 25 years of service for the Police Department, Casa Grande Police Department. He started his service in the department August 1 of 1996, and really served in a whole bunch of different areas. He's done everything from field training officer, driving instructor, firearms instructor, detective. He was in Narcotics, SWAT, serving on the department's disciplinary review board. He really, Chris has been Police Officer of the Year. He's received a total of four life-saving awards during his career, and perhaps most notable, in 1998, Chris received the Award of Valor. It's the highest award the City of Casa Grande has for its Police Department. So, it's amazing, amazing career in really only 25 years. And serving as a police officer in a town that he grew up in really has been more than a job for Chris. It's a calling, and it's a dedication to service. So, on behalf of my fellow city council members in the City of Casa Grande, Chris, thank you for your service, and congratulations.
Thank you. (applause) All the plaque just says, "Chris Western in recognition of 25 years dedication service to the City of Casa Grande." And really, with our heart-held thank you for your service. Thank you. Congratulations. Don't be a stranger. I won't be.
All right.
Started when I was 21.
I went to high school with them.
Sorry, Larry. All right. Again, Chris, congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Have fun.
And you're going to be in our reserve, right, still? Excellent, well, maybe we'll see you around still. You're not leaving town, are you?
That's a full-time job.
All right.
Leaving town, that Eloy deal wasn't the case.
Yeah, okay, good. I hit the Eloy boundary today, I had a meeting over there, and my car started to sputter. Didn't like getting out of town.
Chris, your dad's always been so, such a person that watched and cared about what happened with the Police Department and all that, so I've got a kick out of him over a long period of time, and I know how proud he is of you as we are.
Absolutely. All right, Consent Agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. So, is there anyone who has anything you want to pull off of the consent agenda? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So, move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember... Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is Public Comments. This is the time in the meeting tonight that we will allow any public comments. If there's anyone here wishing to address the city council, this is your opportunity. I will remind you to please state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes to address the council, and we unfortunately cannot reply to you because it's not an agendized item, but we can direct staff to follow up with you at a later point. So, if there's anyone here who would like to address the council, now is your opportunity, whether you filled out a card or not, so. Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the floor, and we'll move to item I, Award of Contracts, I-1. Mr. McCrory.
Thank you, Mayor. Our staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize or improve the IGA between the City of Casa Grande and the Town of Gilbert. In recent years, the Casa Grande Police Department has been using the Phoenix Police Training Academy to train new recruits. Due to staffing shortages, added costs, the Phoenix Police Department announced they will no longer be able to open their academy for outside agencies. We're requesting that the mayor and council approve this IGA so Casa Grande Police Department can send our recruits to the academy that is operated by the Gilbert Police Department. This IGA calls for $4,800 per student plus 3,000 rounds of frangible ammunition, which would be another $1,000. And I'll answer any questions on that if anybody has any.
How many police academies are there in the state?
Four, I think.
Tucson probably got one?
I'm not real sure, Mayor, but I think four that we can go to.
Okay, yeah, I hadn't heard that Gilbert had one, that's why I was just curious, so. Is it nice? Okay, cool. Anybody else have any questions? There was not really a question.
I'm not going to have a question, but you'll probably go on to the next one, but there is such a drastic difference in the cost, so I'm sure you'll go, because the next one is the City of Tucson.
Right.
So, if you can explain that on the next one, why that one's so...
I wish I could explain that, Counselor, but I really don't know the difference or why that is that way.
So, hopefully, we'll send more to Gilbert, right?
It's because it's Tucson.
Yeah.
Trying.
And along those lines, Chief, is it, and I thought maybe it was because it's closer and they drive home at night, or no? That's not...
No, Tucson has a rule that if you live outside a 50-mile radius, you have to spend the night, but we asked them if we sent people that are from the Tucson area, do we get, is it cheaper? And that's the next one coming up, but it's not. So, it's the same price whether you spend the night or you commute.
Or drive home. Okay.
Do the, whoever goes to Gilbert, do they, they do not spend the night, though?
They do not spend the night.
Okay. All right, no other questions, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5374, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Gilbert for the purpose of cooperative law enforcement training operations at the Gilbert Public Safety Training Facility, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the execution of an agreement by the city manager, authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 5374 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and two seconds. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, I-2. Back to you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, our staff recommends the approval of this IGA between the City of Casa Grande and the City of Tucson. As I stated earlier, that we have been going to the Phoenix Police Department Training Academy, but that is no longer going to be available to us. This forced us to seek other accredited academies within the state, and we're requesting that Mayor and Council approve the IGA so that Casa Grande Police Department can send our recruits to the academy in Tucson. As pointed out by Councilmember Fitzgibbons, the cost for the Tucson Academy is $15,000 per recruit plus the 3,000 rounds of ammunition, which would add another $1,000 to that, that is a stayover academy. And with that, I'll answer any other questions.
Can we just go to Gilbert?
We're actually going to go to both.
Okay. And if Phoenix opens back up for any reason?
I'm sorry?
If Phoenix opens back up for any reason, meaning they open it back up to...
We would love to go up to Phoenix, but Chief Williams doesn't see that happening anytime in the near future where they're going to open it up to outside people.
Okay.
What was that cost, Chief, when we went to Phoenix?
Free.
Oh.
It was, it was, Councilwoman Fitzgibbons, it was free, but we had to send, there was a cost. We had to send instructors up to assist with the academy, or we could send up a sergeant that would be the sergeant of the academy, and then we wouldn't have to send any instructors up, just that sergeant. And that went at no cost to us at that point.
I have a question.
Mr. Powell?
CAC used to do some of that training back in the day. Is that not happening at all there at this point in time?
It's not happening at all currently. Mr. Rains and a couple other city managers met with the president of the college and the chiefs in Pinell County. We all met after that this week to discuss the possibility of reopening that. It's still in the very, very early stages because there's going to be a, there's a very big startup cost to that that's, you know, probably going to exceed a million dollars or more that we anticipate, and nobody knows where the funding's going to come from. So, it's still being discussed.
Okay.
So, Chief, can we, oh, sorry, so can we, because we don't know exactly how many people we're sending through this year, right?
Yes, we do.
Or do you have any, how many?
We have three right now that are definitely going to go to the February 7 class in Tucson because we don't set the schedule of when the academies are, we just got to fill them as we get a need. We have six seats available in the March 8, I believe it is, no, March 21, academy in Gilbert, that with the current testing. We know for sure we have one, we're doing backgrounds on three, and we're doing more interviews and stuff this Saturday to try to fill those six slots. And on the outside, chance that anything else comes up unexpectedly for us, we have three more seats reserved in the May Tucson Academy class, just in case, because otherwise we'll miss our opportunity, and we won't be able to get anybody until next fall at any of the other academies.
So, this has given budget authority for those, and then, so you talk about next fall, at that point, do you come back again, and, you know, we can kind of see if there's any other programs that are maybe a little less or something?
We, we're very frugal, and we shop around, and it just so happens that we have absolutely no bargaining power in any of this, right? So, when Tucson says $15,000, if we want to have some people trained in Tucson, we'll pay $15,000. And Gilbert currently is, I think, what did I say, $4,800, I believe, or $5,800, one or the other. And obviously, that was the most desirable cost-wise, but we can only get three seats, and we need probably at least nine seats sometime this year.
Okay, thank you.
Matt? Chief, I want to thank you too, because we sat down about two years ago, I think-ish, and you had your plan laid out for all the, you know, we had a retirement this evening, we had one last month, and I just want to commend you for, and, yeah, and having the foresight to get all this stuff set up ahead of time, so I appreciate it.
We're trying.
And I'm glad that you're on top of it, because it's kind of a scary thing, we need to have enough police officers, so. Thank you.
And Chief, just for clarification, the way that we were doing it in Phoenix, where you sent somebody else up there, are we going to be doing that at either locations for sure?
In Gilbert, I think we're going to, we're going to have to help a little bit. This is our first time up there, so we'll probably send one or two up sometime throughout the academy, but mainly that's just to see how our recruits are doing. I don't think we'll get a break on that. Tucson, we haven't actually sat down and talked to them about cost yet, cost savings on the, if we send instructors. And when we pull, our problem with sending instructors is when we send an instructor, that's usually going to be on either their overtime, or we have to backfill here to pay somebody overtime. So, at some point, even though the cost, $15,000, sounds unbelievable, right? If we start sending instructors down there, our overtime cost is going to be up quicker than 15,000, you know, exceed $15,000. So, we still got to get the exact cost savings to see if it's cost beneficial for us to send instructors down.
Can we just send Western? He's going to have a lot of time on his hands.
They may send him back.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a resolution, please, Gloria. Thank you, Chief.
Resolution Number 5375, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Tucson for the purpose of cooperative law enforcement training operations at the Southern Arizona Law Enforcement Training Center, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, authorizing the execution of an agreement by the city manager, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve Resolution Number 5375 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item's I-3.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm here to talk to you about Resolution 5378. This is a awarding of a contract for purchase of a new 2022 Pierce Velocity Pumper. Pumpers are fire engines, they're the ones that carry the hose and they squirt the water. The cost of this fire engine is, I'll kind of cover, but the cost I'm asking you to authorize this evening is $808,151.08. When I talk about a Pierce Velocity, Pierce is the brand, like Ford or Chevy, and Velocity is the model. We're going for a Pierce Velocity, which is actually the ma, a step down from the previous ones that we had been using. We made a kind of an evaluation, and we also made a commitment to the city manager that we would look at the apparatus we were purchasing and determine whether we really needed what we were getting. So, we have stepped down slightly with this Velocity, but it's a very good fire engine, it's used in a lot of places, it's their most popular fire engine, so. We will be requesting, we're going to make a, we've spoken with Angel from Finance and the city manager, we'll be making a prepayment of the order. By doing a prepayment of the order, we save $41,477.87. We are doing this purchase through the Sourcewell Cooperative Agreement. We are replacing Unit 434, which is a 2008 Pierce Quantum that we currently use as a reserve apparatus. So, the reserve apparatus will go away, it actually has a blown motor, so we're not going to fix it. It was about $50,000 or $60,000 to fix it, so we made the decision not to fix it, to save that money. And then, Unit 436 will move into the reserve fleet, it'll be one of our reserve apparatus. And when I say a reserve apparatus, we have the frontline ones that are in the station, when one of them breaks or needs maintenance or goes in the shop, we don't, we don't have the ability to not have the fire engine there, so we have to move a reserve into that spot. So, we keep two reserve fire engines to take care of accommodations when something's broken or being maintained by public works. They estimated 12 to 18 months from the order date, and Mayor McFarland can probably tell you guys a little bit about it. It's a very complicated thing, it's not like going to a Chevy dealer or a Ford dealer. They build the, you know, they're, they start out with a frame, and they custom make this all the way from the ground up, so it is a little bit of a process to do. We have realized some increases in cost. I think everybody knows that cost of steel is up significantly, so that's one of the reasons for the price increase. We are getting all the same stuff that we always get, it's going to have a Cummins X12 diesel, it's going to have 500 horsepower, it's going to have an Allison Series 4000 EVS transmission, 1,500 GPM water pump, still going to carry 750 gallons of water, all the same hose and ladder complements that all of our fire engines carry. We had budgeted $718,400 for this fire engine, and we were going off some of the previous year's purchases of fire engines. I bring that up because of the price increase, and that was attributed to the steel. We did, so there is a shortfall of about $89,751, and we will, we requested a city manager-approved budget transfer from the technical reserve account to cover the remainder of that money from what was budgeted in our CIP budget. I would, lastly, I'd like to thank Brett and Mark's staff, they worked very hard on this this week, as well as Gloria's staff. We found out from Pierce just last week, at the end of the week, that on February 1, they were initiating a price increase, and this fire engine would have went up $50,000 on February 1. And these guys jumped through hoops to get, you know, this, all this paperwork and stuff, we don't put it together in like 10 minutes. It went through a number of things, and it had to go all, through all the different shops and the city manager's office to get it approved, so I just want to thank them for all their hard work on it. They really helped a lot by getting this through, and we saved $50,000 that if we had to do it at the next council meeting, we would have been spending that extra money, so that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions about this resolution.
I got one comment, Chief, as I remember when you, when you started as chief, when you became the chief, you did make a commitment to us that your fire trucks were going to be a little more economical, and you're living up to that, so I appreciate that.
We did, we took...
While it still has the quality that we're looking for, but you said...
Same quality, same, almost the same fire engine. This is just a little bit step, it's one model down, and it's a great fire engine. We've gone and looked at it at a number of places, and we, one of the other things we did, we removed cabs, which was something that we had on a lot of our fire engines we didn't really need. And probably the biggest thing, and, you know, we'll see how this, how our members take this, but we took the hydraulic steps that popped down when you opened the door. I've always had an issue with that, because it's just something I'm not accustomed to. After 40 years in the fire service, I'd never seen it before, and when we looked at the bills that we pay to keep those steps working, it was like, why would we ever do that again? So, these do not have hydraulic steps. did, we removed cabs, which was something that we had on a lot of our fire engines we didn't really need. And probably the biggest thing, and, you know, we'll see how this, how our members take this, but we took the hydraulic steps that popped down when you opened the door. I, I've always had an issue with that because it's just something I'm not accustomed to. After 40 years in the fire service, I'd never seen it before, and when we looked at the bills that we pay to keep those steps working, it was like, why would we ever do that again? So these do not have hydraulic steps, they have fixed steps, and you have to use your big boy arms and big, big girl's arms to grab the handle and pull yourself up into it, so that's one of the big differences in it.
I don't know, I think I'm gonna miss the hydraulic steps.
I'd never seen one before, and I opened the door and I almost got my knee taken off of it, so.
And also the, the prepayment, I'm always proud of that, that we can do that as a city to save the money. I mean, there's been some talk about could you spend it better, but this is budgeted for a fire truck, and, I mean, it's a guaranteed savings, and plus, with the $50,000 now, we're saving almost $91,000 if you want to look at it that way, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else in comments? All right, thanks, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, if the motion is to approve this resolution, I would ask that we make an amendment to sections 1 and 3, just to allow, so after where the words Pierce Manufacturing Incorporated are, to add the words "or their authorized dealer", because we are going to be purchasing this through an authorized dealer, so we just want to make that clear. So that's in sections 1 and 3, after the words Price Manufacturing, Inc., it'll be comma, "or their authorized dealer", comma.
Okay.
And Gloria does have the updated resolution, should that pass, as stated.
All right.
Do we need to do an emergency or anything because of the timing, or?
It's a resolution, so it only requires one, because it's on the CIP.
All right, Gloria, I'll entertain a resolution with so noted changes.
Resolution number 5378. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., for the purchase of a 2022 Pierce Velocity Pumper, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., in accordance with the terms and conditions submitted to the Sourcewell National Joint Powers Alliance, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5378 with the amendment of adding "or their-"
Or authorized.
Or authorized dealer after Pierce Manufacturing in section 1 and 3.
Second.
Does that cover it?
Yes.
Yes, that covers it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to item K, which is our ordinance resolutions and other matters for subjects requiring action by the council. So K1, let's consider final adoption of ordinance 1178.241.1. Gloria?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this appears for a second reading, and it was not on the, under the consent agenda because it did not get a unanimous vote. Ordinance number 1178.241.1. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 in its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential on property generally located east of Pier Road and north of Rodeo Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
And I do, I would do want to make a note that there was some comments made in the last city council meeting, and concerns, I think, aired in terms of the, all the, all the R2 zoning things that we've been approving, and so staff is taking, is making an effort to put together some information, similar to some of Lisa's comments and my comments, in terms of getting us some additional information on what does that really look like, what are really the lot sizes looking like in terms of these new approvals, so hopefully we'll get council some feedback and some additional information that, that should help with, with the concerns, because I, I hold them myself as well, so we want to make sure we give everybody information that you can make a good decision with. So just before, if anybody would like to make a motion?
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.241.1 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
No.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
No, but I would like to ask a question if I could. I was under the impression that on the R2s, it was single-family only, but this is a multifamily residential. What's, what's the difference going on with that?
It's not, it's a single family.
This one is.
This one is. R2 can have multiple, multifamily, but the restriction-
This one is only single family.
The restriction that was put on by staff was that there would be no multifamily in this development, correct?
Mr. Mayor, correct.
I didn't mean to put words in your mouth.
No, you're, you're 100% right. The name of the zone district is R2, in parentheses, multifamily residential, that just happens to be the general name for that zone district, but per your point, because of the conditions of record put on the zoning, it restricts development.
Single family.
Correct.
Yeah. So it's just single family.
Okay, to go, basically, it says the planned area development, PAD, to multifamily residential, R2 on property located, blah, blah, blah. And as I say, my question is, I had assumed that you either did single-family R2 or you didn't do R2, but do you have multifamily R2?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Powell, the name of the zone district, R2 multifamily residential, in general, would allow multifamily development, however, subject to the recommended conditions of record, it would prohibit multifamily development, it would only allow other uses permitted in the R2, which includes single-family residential, which is the driver for this request.
Okay, mine, mine is a no vote.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, item K2 is resolution 5376.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight's staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution of support for LCY's application for designation as a foreign trade zone, subzone for its manufacturing operation, they are proposing to build and authorize and approve staff to enter into any necessary agreements. LCY is an international chemical company that has purchased approximately 34.2 acres in the Central Arizona Commerce Park that is zoned for heavy industrial uses, to build an 80,000 square foot facility to produce their products that support the semiconductor industry. The manufacturing facility is projected to create up to 57 full-time jobs with an average wage of $75,000 and represent a capital investment of over $100 million. LCY is applying to be part of an active foreign trade zone and subzone under Foreign Trade Zone 75, which is administered out of the City of Phoenix. They are pursuing the designation to receive the property tax reclassification incentive and tariff reductions that FTZ provides. As part of this application, LCY is required to obtain letters of support from all taxing entities that receive revenue from property taxes generated from this new facility, which includes the City of Casa Grande. This request by LCY is being brought before you tonight to help them position themselves to be ready to submit their application once their project completes the city and county permitting process, which includes receiving approval for a conditional use permit and meeting all safety requirements that will ensure the facility is constructed and operated in a safe manner, minimizing the risk to employee, to their employees and surrounding properties. The estimated economic impact for this, for this project over 10 years is approximately $4 million for this revenue to this, to the city. Fiscal, potential fiscal impact to the city, the property ta, estimated property tax reduction over 10 years would be total about $10 million, with the city's portion being approximately $700,000 over a 10-year period. And with that, I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
So the impact on property taxes of cities is much, is pretty minor?
It's a lot lower than what the revenues we would be receiving from this project.
Okay. Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any questions on this? Okay, seeing none, I will ask for a resolution, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5376. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, supporting a foreign trade zone designation for the proposed LCY Electronic Materials, Inc., manufacturing facility, authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix related to the foreign trade zone, and authorizing the city manager to take other actions and execute such other documents as needed to implement the foreign trade zone designation.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution 5376 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is item K3, another foreign trade zone.
Good evening, and, uh, Mayor, city council, tonight's staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution of support for Chang, Changchong application for, for designation as a foreign trade zone, subzone for its manufacturing operation, they are proposing to build and authorize and approve staff to enter into any necessary agreements with the City of Phoenix. Changchong is part of an international chemical company that has purchased approximately 80 acres in the Pinal County Tech Park, which is zoned for heavy industrial uses, to build an approximately 540,000 square foot facility to produce their products that support the semiconductor industry. The manufacturing facility is projected to create approximately 209 full-time jobs with an average wage of $55,000 and represents a capital investment of over $400 million. Changchong is applying to be part of an active foreign trade zone and subzone under Foreign Trade Zone 75. They are pursuing the designation to receive the property tax reclassification incentive and tariff reduction that FTZ provides. As part of the application process, Changchong is required to obtain letters of support from all taxing entities that receive revenue from the property taxes generated from this new facility, which includes the City of Casa Grande. This request by Changchong is positioned, is, is being brought before you tonight to help them position themselves to be ready to submit their application once their project completes the city and county permitting processes, which includes receiving approval for a conditional use permit and meeting all safety requirements that will, that will ensure the facility is constructed and operated in a safe manner, minimizing the risk to its employees and the surrounding properties. The economic impact over 10 years estimated for this project is $15, $15 million, and that's to the city. The potential fiscal impact for the property tax reduction over a 10-year period totals a $33 million, the city's portion of that is estimated at about $2.3 million, again, significantly lower than what the benefits would be to the city. I stand ready to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Wilkie? Okay, seeing no questions, then I'll call for resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5377. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, supporting a foreign trade zone designation for the proposed Changchong, Arizona LLC manufacturing facility, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agree, enter, enter an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix related to the foreign trade zone, and authorizing the city manager to take other actions and execute such other documents.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5377 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. All right, that concludes most of this evening's business. The next item on the agenda is the much anticipated reports from the city of council, city council, and I'll start with you, Lisa.
Who's anticipating?
Much anticipated. Well, I don't have a lot, I just wanted to let everyone know that we, last meeting, we talked about the point in time homeless count, and that has been postponed to February 24th instead of next week due, due to COVID. So they are going to, Mary Allen here with the city, as well as Cara, is offering a training, so we, we actually have had quite a few people that have expressed an interest to help on this count, which is great, it shows the community really wants to get involved. So we have two trainings that are going to be coming up. One is on February 17th at 8:30 a.m. at the Public Safety Facility, and the other, there's going to be two virtual options on the 15th and 17th of February at 2 o'clock. So if anyone would like to participate in the homeless count, you have to go through this training, which they kind of go through the whole app, the questionnaire and everything so when you're going out doing the, the count. They are looking for $10 gift cards, so if anyone would like to make any donations, they would like to, you know, that, that would help them, to give out when they're doing the count, to give to the homeless, and, you know, restaurants are really handy. So that, that's really it. The Faith Alliance, as we all know, there's a major shortage of blood, the Faith Alliance on March, God, I can't even read, March 19th is going to be holding a blood drive at St. Anthony's, we think St. Anthony's, but, so please, anyone, there's a major shortage all over the country, so if you can donate blood, I'll remind you every meeting until then.
Yeah, I guess it is bad.
Yeah. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Powell?
Well, the, one of the things that I was interested in is, is the chip manufacturing that has been out and we've been thinking about. I found out that we have chip manufacturing right here in Casa Grande at Frito Lake.
That's true. Was that your revelation?
That's me.
That was the much anticipated report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell. Matt?
I do have a few things.
Go for it.
I just wanted to say, I had a great chamber dinner the other night, and I got to be there with the youth commission as they were awarded the community service of, organization of the year, and thanks to Banner Health and APS, they sponsored the tables for the youth commission and had a couple extra seats, so some of the parents could attend as well. So we had a great attendance there, it was great. The whole, the whole dinner went very smoothly, and they also honored my good old friend Fernando, and that was pretty, pretty heartwarming, to say the least, so it was a great event. This weekend, we have the street fair, I was told to announce, Saturday, Sunday, they have over 100 vendors, over 150 cars, and then food, fun, festivals, so come on out, and it will be Chamber of Commerce weather, according to the Chamber of Commerce, so it'll be a great day to be there, be perfect. I had the distinct opportunity to speak with Cub Scout PAC 919 the other night about the youth commission and city government, and I did find out that these young boys and girls did understand taxes a bit, that that's how stuff got funded in town, so I was pretty impressed by that, and I asked them what they wanted, and I told them I had to bring it back to you guys, so I made a short list. They want more fields, more basketball courts, and I told them about our remodeled park here, and a lot of them didn't know, so that was good. They want another Chick-fil-A, they want another Whataburger, and I said, we're getting one, so.
Coming soon.
It's, they were pretty impressed by that. They want indoor pool, outdoor pool, so I said, maybe at the community center soon, I'm hoping, and more indoor hot tubs. So just a brief list of what we discussed at the Cub Scout meeting, and they are having their fundraiser, it's the enchilada fundraiser, and that is on January 29th, so next week, $10 per plate before 1:25, $12 per plate day of, enchilada, rice, beans, and sopapilla at the Presbyterian Church, and they have drive-through options as well, 4 to 8 p.m. and so that's their fundraiser, and they have asked to come to a meeting in February, I was talking to Stephen about that, so we're trying to figure that out to see if they can present the color. So it's really neat to see our organization in town, and they'll tell us more about that when they come.
Matt, who's that that's doing that?
The Cub Scouts. PAC 919, they meet at the Presbyterian Church. So it was a lot of fun, and the kids were full of questions and suggestions, so it was great. But I, I said indoor hot tubs, I thought that was a good idea. We'll see there if that's in the budget, huh? But, more serious, also, oh, there's a great opportunity- huh? But more serious, also, oh, there's a great opportunity to honor the Casa Grande High School championship team. The Pinal Forty has agreed to put up $10,000 to match up to $10,000 to pay for the rings for the kids and the team members. So it's a really great opportunity to make our money count, and any money that's over that will go to the Cougar Football, Inc., and you can give those donations to Cougar Football, Inc. at Fitzgibbons Law Office, is my understanding. So, and the rings are about $250 each, so they're looking to buy about 50, a little over 50 of them.
That's a neat idea.
It's a really neat idea. And Pinal Forty stepped up and said, we'll give 10,000, we'll match up to 10,000. They'll give $10,000, but we're trying to get a match for the community so that
So they can collect 20.
More people can collect 20, and then
Then you got 10 extra.
Yeah, for the football team, because they deserve to be recognized for that. So just want to make sure that all the kids are recognized and honored. So if anyone wants to do that, contact me, Ben, Pinal Forty, anybody, and then also at Fitzgibbons Office is the headquarters for Pinal, or for Cougar Football, Inc., is that, that's what it's called. So you can drop off your money there. And then this Friday, we have the services for Chewy Laura and Celebration of Life, so.
Friday, right?
Yep, Friday. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Donna?
You know, I was going to mention Officer Laura, but I, more than, you know, everybody is, you know, talking about, you know, honoring him, I have just been amazed at the community and what they have done on behalf of him and his family. And it's just heartwarming to know that even though people didn't, some of them didn't know him, and driving by the sign at McDonald's where they lit up his name in honor of him, it was just the coolest thing. So thank you to the community, and I know it's been a hard time for our police department. Another thing I just want to mention, St. Vincent de Paul is completely run by volunteers, and I'm talking with their president of their board, and they're always looking for volunteers down at their shop to help. They've done a lot of good things. And so if anybody's looking to volunteer for a couple hours, they need some people down at their store, and that's it.
Thanks, Donna. Mr. Lavender?
Well, I had hoped to report on the Unity March today, but we had, we needed to postpone it because of the surge, so hopefully in an upcoming meeting. And Chief, we're very sorry for your department's loss, and your department will be in our thoughts and prayers on Friday.
Thank you. All right, just a few things from me. We have this week, the Pinal Partnership Breakfast is this Friday at 7:30, and we'll have all, it's going to be at CAC's campus in their student union, and we'll have all the mayors, most of the major communities in Pinal County will be there in a roundtable format. So it should be rather interesting to hear from everybody, from Mayor Tara in Florence to Eloy Coolidge, Maricopa, and of course, me, the mayor of Casa Grande. And so looking forward to that. And not to reiterate, but again, let's get out to the Street Fair this weekend. Should be a great weekend. And then hopefully, we'll have a little more information on the Pinal Regional Transportation Authority. We have a board meeting this Thursday where we will approve all of the intergovernment agreements that we have with our 17 members of that group. And so we'll be ready to go as soon as the, as soon as the state Supreme Court says it's okay to go. And we have about $77 million sitting in an escrow account, so really would like to start using that money. One of the first projects will be Thornton Road. It will be one of the first funded projects if we can get past that hurdle.
Needs to be.
Yeah, we need, it needs to happen. And I'm going to get to go actually ride on, ride out on the track at Tessa tomorrow. So if you don't see me in two weeks, then you'll know what happened to me. So I'm looking forward to that. So that could be, that could be really good. This past week, or the week before, I did attend, and I'm a member of the Arizona Broadband Mayor's Roundtable, and so we had some good information that they gave out to us. We're going to go after some grant money. They're also going to go after the federal grant money as a group. So hopefully, we'll see some of that come through for our community and make sure we can try and narrow that divide in our community with those who need help with access to the Internet, as you all are very keenly aware how important that is, especially
Absolutely.
Especially when our kids get shut down and they have to go to school from home. It's, it really makes it very, very difficult. So one of the things that Larry talked about was this culture assessment, and I just wanted to share some of the things that the city's doing. There's a statement, it's called the Y Statement, and our Y Statement, or the staff has put together, Building a Better Community. And I think that really is kind of what we're here for, right? I mean, that's why, that's why we volunteer to be council members on the City Council. And then the point-of-view statements, we are adaptable and resilient. We acknowledge our history. We provide a unified approach to deliver exceptional service. We enhance our future through planning, stewardship, and collaboration. Amazing statements in my mind. And Larry, congratulations to your group. Those are great statements for us to live by and to follow and to include potentially in our strategic plan. I'd like to maybe see if we can't do that. I think those are valuable statements. And then the values being caring, courage, honesty, and accountability. So kudos to you guys. Thank you for all you do, and really appreciate, you know, everything that staff does. We don't say it enough, but it is really appreciated. And that's why we're really lucky, and we, I think, why we are so successful as a community is because we have great staff and great leadership, too. And I include my council members in on all that, because I think it takes vision, takes vision, takes work, right? Takes a lot of hard work. And so I think we're headed in a good direction. I don't want to get off on a political speech here, but it, I think, really, really headed in a good spot. We're in a good spot. And just a reminder, we do have, they just came out today from the feds. I think if you've been paying attention to the news, there are free test kits, the rapid test kits. You can go to www.special.usps, United States Postal Service, USPS.com/ testkits, or go to www.covidtests.gov, and they will send you free two test kits, which has, it's four test kits. It's two boxes, and there's two test kits in each box. But they'll deliver it to you free. And every address can get four tests, basically, four test kits for free. So go there, and if you can't go there, then go to Dorothy Powell, weekly, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. No appointments are needed. Go there, get tested, and just walk in. And Sun Life is also doing testing. Their times are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So those are all free testing. So if you need to get tested, there should be no reason why you can't get it done. Now, I think Sun Life is not a rapid test. It's a PCR test, so it takes a little longer, a little longer, but it's probably a little more accurate. But it'll take a little longer to get it back. So.
I always have one more thing, really.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Powell, what would you like to say?
Well, I'm concerned about, I know Yuma, Tucson, Hila Bion, a lot of areas have got a lot of immigration, people that have come into their communities. We've got a bus on McCartney that unloads people just about dark, and sometimes it's almost up to 100 people you look at, and I don't know, it's not every weekend, but it is every other, and it's usually, as I say, when it's getting dark. So I just thought somebody needs to look into that and just see what is going on, and if it's legitimate, or if it's, most of them are, there's mostly men, and most of them are, will get off and walk across the street. First time I went by, I looked over there, and there's about 100 and something people in the driveway, and I thought, wow, what's going on? But I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble, but I just think we need to know the status of what's going on that way. It's a white bus that comes, Mexico plates on it that comes in.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell. I did have one more thing.
Okay.
The legislature, the legislature's back in session. So they started last week. We did have the governor's state of the state. He did give us his budget last Friday, and he did earmark $400 million for I-10 widening.
Wonderful.
You should get a big round of applause. Come on.
That's good.
So just to give you guys a heads up, I had a meeting today. I have one, we have one every Monday, although it was Tuesday this week with the league. And the things that the legislature is concentrating on are affordable housing, short-term rentals, vaccine bills. There's about seven vaccination mandate bills, not to mandate, but to take mandate away. And there's a weird one, municipal dues. So they're coming after cities and towns again, and then election reform. So those are the hot buttons this year. So if I, if I send you a note, please follow up on some of these bills, because you can go in and actually either go against or support, and it does make a difference, especially as an elected official. The legislators will listen.
Since you had another one, I'm going to let you just stay that way.
Thanks, all right. Thank you, everybody, and
End it with that.
Meeting adjourned.